We go on to the next item, which is item number three. There was conversation earlier in the meeting about the provision in the agreement that spoke to Rock's obligation to pay for the cup. So I have the language here, so I'll have Darcelle pass that out for everybody's record. Just as we continue to move forward. It was spoken on already by Commissioner Anderson and I believe Commissioner McCormick, maybe. But, and then Mr. Kaufman spoke to it as well, but that's the language that was in question. And Darcelle, if you can have Joe pass that out. Thank you, I'm sorry. And then we'll start on the next item. Item number three.
Item three, approval of a coordination agreement with DTE Russell Street LLC and Rock Development Company LLC.
Okay, so this is a coordination agreement between the county, DTE Russell Street LLC?
DTEES, I think?
DTE Russell Street LLC. DTE has a lot of subsidiaries?
Yeah.
Okay, one of the DTE subsidiaries. And the Justice Center. Okay, Mr. Kaufman and Mr. Heath.
We spent a year with DTE and Rock and Barton Malo and HOK talking about a lot of things. One of the things we had to talk about was now that, now that, um...
As part of working out how to get this cup built, there's more than just who's going to pay, how much is going to be the county to pay whom to get it done. We're building the Criminal Justice Center at the same time we're building this. And all these parties need to have rules.
To, thank you. To coordinate the building. And what this agreement seeks to do is set out what is that a coordination? What does Rock expect of DTE, vice versa, and the other entities involved? James, any additions to what this is?
No. That's a summary. Correct.
So this outlines who's doing what, who's responsible for what?
When, schedules?
Schedules. Okay. Any questions on item number three? Or just the coordination agreement? Commissioner Ware?
Thank you. So, everybody was at the table when you all went over this?
Many times.
Okay, thank you. Just checking, thank you.
Commissioner Colleen and the Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Counsel points out, or staff points out in their analysis that DTE Russell may assign this contract back to the parent company at their choosing, and we don't have anything to say about this. That give you any concerns on an assignment?
It's a good question for our corp counsel.
So, you know, this is something that we talked about and commission staff asked about, you know, a history of, of assignment of these sorts of agreements, and they, they have none. You know, we were confident in, at all points throughout this with the guarantee of the larger DTE brand, and that's one of the reasons why we brought these before you. So we noted commission council's concern, but our, our analysis was that we still thought this was a prudent way to go, Commissioner.
Okay, I'd just like to get a quick comment from commission counsel on that, whether that's still a concern?
Through the chair, it's not.
Okay. The other thing, Madam Chair, I'd like to do, the first comment notwithstanding when we sat down, I guess I'm not familiar with the coordination committee. What is that and who gets appointed to it? What are they doing?
So, so the coordination agreement is, spells out the responsibilities amongst the three parties. There are, there is a coordination team consisting of people from the county. We have not determined as of yet for sure who will sit on that, that coordination team. I believe deputy county executive would be one of those, those, those parties, perhaps corporation counsel, perhaps our building maintenance director, Mr. Kelly. But our, our job or the job of that committee would be to kind of resolve and work out any disputes that, that might arise amongst the parties.
With regards to this agreement?
Regarding the building of the cup.
Which is this agreement? That we're, aren't we approving a, an agreement, a $30 million agreement here to build the thing?
That's, that's number two that you just approved.
This is number three.
This is number three, which spells out our, our, our rules of engagement with one another.
Yeah, yeah. So who sits on that committee?
It's, it's not been formally determined as of yet, Commissioner.
Well, because the question was, there's two management reps. Who are they going to be? So we don't know who's, how that committee is going to be compromised yet? Com-?
Well, we definitely, we definitely don't know that. I need to tell you, the committee, the committee will not be compromised in any way.
I was using the correct comprised, yeah. No, that, that's in the newspaper articles later. We don't know who's going to be, what, what it's going to comprise of.
From the county's, from the county side of things, it will be members of executive management. We have not set in stone who those individual members would be.
But anybody else on the committee will be. It's one of the derivations of Rock.
Yes.
That we sit on that committee?
DTE.
I mean, DTE. Yeah. So there won't be like a commission rep or something like that on there?
No.
Yeah, okay. All right, thanks. Madam Chair, thanks.
Okay, next speaker is Commissioner Anderson.
I was, I was just going to say, the last six words in that paragraph, you know, indicates that there's not going to be any additional cost to the county for this. This particular thing is just, as you mentioned, Judge Kaufman, I think it's pretty clear that it's just directions of how everyone's got to work together to keep the construction of the jail, Criminal Justice Center proceeding on, on schedule. And so, thank you.
Some of approval?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next item?
Item number four, requesting commission approval of a five-year comparable source special facilities standard contract rider number two agreement between the Charter County of Wayne and DTE Electric Company in the amount of $322,470 to reserve capacity for the Wayne County Criminal Justice Center on a second power line to provide backup electrical power to the facility.
So moved, support.
Question, Commissioner Anderson?
Just wanted to clarify that that amount is one-time cost. It's a one-time cost?
Correct, but I, I know.
It's a monthly, it's a monthly.
Oh, it's a monthly?
Monthly charge of $5,374.
Well, this is the entire contract with DTE.
This is the second power line?
This is the reserve capacity.
Oh, just second power line, okay. Yeah, no, this is a monthly charge for five years in order to make sure we have another line available if the first one goes down.
Okay, all right.
And, Mr. Abell?
Commissioner, this is included in our analysis on attachment aid, the third item, electric power to backup electrical line, annual cost 64, $494, and total contract 322,470. So it's incorporated as part of the total.
And that would be something we'd have to pay in, no matter what, with the facility and we had. Did we have a backup? Does anyone know with the old Grashit Jail? Was there a backup power? Was there, was it in the plans for that? That, I'm sure we would have had to have some.
I suspect, but I don't know.
I mean, what's that?
The Grashit Jail at Wood.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, Commissioner, um, Recky?
Just, so the first line is in item two, and this is the second line?
Correct.
Okay.
So I guess Commissioner Anderson, if, if we didn't want a second line?
No, 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 no.
They took them backwards?
Yeah.
Yes. Number, number five is the first line.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Right, number five is the first line.
Oh, so it's not included in the cost of number two? I mean, the line is not in number two? Okay. All right, so we're going to get to that in number five?
Number two is with DTE Energy Services. They're not the ones bringing in the electricity. DTE electricity is, and we have two contracts with them. This is the one for the extra line.
Okay.
In case the first one goes down.
Yep.
And then the next one is the first line.
The first line, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Colleen?
Madam Chair. In the staff analysis of this, this item, D5, make sure I'm on the right, there were several concerns raised about this agreement.
Number four. Well, number four.
Round four. Round four.
We're on the second power line.
Okay, all right.
The facilities installment agreement. Five is the line extension agreement.
First line is five.
Make sure I'm in the right place. We got a lot of contracts. My questions will be related to item five, and Madam Chair, I'll see you then.
Okay, and Felicia, did you have a comment? I saw you.
No, I was trying to clarify that five and four go together. So number five is the installation of two power lines, and then number four is the agreement to reserve power for that second line for that monthly fee.
Okay, so.
So they sort of go together.
Yeah, so why don't we do four and five together? So, again, number five was the, the initial line, number four is the backup line, so, um... Commissioner Basham?
Well, the problem with that is, I'm okay with four. If other commissioners have questions with five, it might mess us up, but I guess if you want to do that as chair, that's fine, but complicates it. We've already moved it and supported it.
Okay, so we, number four has been moved and supported, but just to know that they're related, and four really comes after five, but, fine. Commissioner Anderson?
I, I realize what that is, but I'm, but I also believe that would have been a cost that, that is a cost that Rock is going to share in, right? For paying for that.
No.
They're not.
No.
At all. Okay.
Sticky with number four, moved by Commissioner Varga, supported.
I have Commissioner Basham.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Basham. Baydum has supported it. Any further discussion on number four? But remember, four comes after five. Any questions on number four? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One opposed? Okay, any, Commissioner Anderson, any abstentions? Okay, number five.
Item number five is requesting commission approval of a five-year comparable source customer line extension agreement between the Charter County of Wayne and DTE Electric Company in the amount of $876,413 to install two sets of in-ground power lines to the Wayne County Criminal Justice Center.
Okay, it's pretty, um...
So, just a couple of comments. This is the contract to bring electricity to the site. It's with DTE Electric, and in order not to have a delay in the product, the project that could cost millions, if not 10 millions of dollars based on the schedule, DTE Electric had to start doing their work on June 1st. There was no way around this conundrum, other than Khalil Rahal and myself going to Mike Crisp, the, one of the vice presidents of DTE, explaining our dilemma. There's no way we can get commission approval by June 1st. The earliest we anticipate could be August 1st, if we just go with this one separately and explain to the commission why it's, has its unique problems. DTE agreed to start acting on June 1st as if we had an agreement, as opposed to never having done this before, and indicating they would have had to get their payment of $876,000, it is, before they would start doing any work. We told them we can't guarantee it. We are highly hopeful that these necessary agreements to complete the criminal justice system will be approved by the commission, and he agreed to act as if we had a contract and tell DTE Electric to start going forward and doing their work. So we're very, very hopeful, and we understand you don't like retroactive contracts. We don't like retroactive contracts. We didn't know another solution here, and so we're asking you to approve it, and the minute tomorrow, if you do approve it, we will start running around to try, to get a check for $876,000 and get it over to Detroit Edison. That is the one-time charge to connect to us. It's not just to the connection, they have a number of pipeline to build to get here, and that's the problem. That needs to be completed by like, May, I think it's May 30th of next year, for there not to be a delay in the overall project.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Varga, supported by Vice Chair Proton Ware. Discussion, questions? Commissioner Colleen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I was saying, a few things are pointed out in the committee analysis that I'd like responses to. One is, is the DTE, maybe I'd ask counsel, commission counsel on this. DTE can unilaterally extend this agreement for a period of time, quote, determined in the sole judgment of DTE, close quote. What, what's that opening us up to, counsel?
Through the, through the chair, so the agreement, the cost of the agreement, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the cost of the agreement is based on an estimated consumption, so they estimated the rates, and the agreement indicates that if the county's consumption is less, which means DTE would get paid less, that they have a right to then extend this agreement for a period of time that would allow them to recoup the costs that they're fronting us for construction. So they're fronting us costs essentially for construction. They give us a construction allowance of, I think it's 100 and...
198.
198. And so, if, this will allow them to recoup their cost. So they'll get to extend the agreement, let's say for an additional year or two years, or however long it takes them to recoup their costs.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's exactly right, that we have a minimum usage for, I think, the first three years, but we've been assured by our utility consultant that that should not be a problem.
Yeah, I understand the concept there. I also pointed out that under section 6 of the agreement, DTE provides no warranties for its services it'll provide, and its liability is limited by its rate book. Commission counsel, what does that mean?
Well, I, I would assume that that's typical with services provided by DTE, just like many companies, they limit their exposure. And so this would just be some standard language that they would use to limit their exposure. And again, I would assume that that's just their standard, this is their standard contract, so that's something that they generally just do.
That's accurate. All of the DTE Electric and DTE Gas contracts that you have before you are their standard agreements that they use with municipalities, entities across the board. So there was little to no opportunity for the county to change those terms in, in dealing with, with DTE.
So what are we getting into here, counsel? If there's no warranties here, does that mean, as we just voted to have a backup power line, if the electricity's not coming through those lines, oh, well? What's a...
But that's not the warranted issue.
What's the warranty involved in?
So the warranties would be like for, and maybe I should probably let you speak to it, or counsel, but when you talk about the backup lines, that's a contractual obligation, which is different from a warranty for warranting the type of services or when service will be provided, or some other things that I'm going to look at counsel on this side to reply to.
They're talking, they're talking about the, the actual lines that they are, that they're running here, in terms of the warranty, not that they will provide a certain amount of electricity to...
So they're not warranting their labor? Is that what we're saying here? Their materials and labors are not under warranty?
It's, it's, it's limited. It is limited. So section 6B, company's liability under this agreement is limited by rule 6, 1.2 of the rate book. In no, in no instance will a company be liable for any cause of action relating to the subject of the agreement, whether, well...
I'm looking for something practical here. What does that practically mean? That this is the contract that we're getting into? What is it that they're going to come back and say later, oh, no, we didn't warranty that? Give me some...
What could go wrong here, is what you're asking?
Uh, that's exactly what I'm asking. What's the, what's the practical? How would this rear its head practically?
Joe Moylan, that warranty is referring to the quality of power. You're supposed to receive 13,200 volts. If for some reason they're only delivering 10,000 volts, they're saying that they are not responsible for that as long as they follow standard practices, and your remedy in any case will be to go to the Michigan Public Service Commission. There are monopoly that is regulated by the Public Service Commission. Therefore, all disputes will have to go through them.
Thank you, I guess. Thank you, Madam Chair.
It's the exact same agreement that every one of their 1.2 million customers has.
Including residential?
Including residential. Including the county and one and other sites.
So if there's a surge in power, something that blows up our equipment, our recourse is the Public Service Commission?
Correct.
Well, that's exciting. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any additional questions on item number five? Commissioner Webb, did you have a question?
I just have a comment. You know, as somebody who has, who spent 18 years in utility distribution, these are practical agreements. I know, they, they're not going to be accountable for acts of God that happen with things like that. They can't be. So I understand them. You know, I voted in support of the backup line because of my background. I know the importance of redundancy. If something big on the grid blows, you're going to lose that one too, but at least if, you know, at least you got a second shot at it before, before you go down. But, you know, really, I'm probably going to just abstain from these items, and not because, because of the bigger picture that I'm opposed to, so, but, so, I, I'm not arguing with the merit of this particular line. I'm just going to abstain because of my opposition to the whole project. But as far as DTE goes and their distribution of these utilities, what is where you guys makes sense?
Okay, Commissioner Recky?
Thank you. So, to Commissioner Webb's point, if both lines go down, we, there's a generator in here somewhere, right? Didn't I read? Okay.
On that point, it's a generator with 72 hours of gas. It's in the information here.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, could you repeat that?
I was saying, in our information, it'd tell you that it was the generator, and the generator will be already gassed for 72 hours. And after 72 hours, then we have to go out and purchase more gas. It's all in the information.
Okay, Commissioner Baker McCormick?
Thank you. Just clarifying, the material difference due to DTE's sole discretion as to whether they extend the agreement, I noticed that there's a, there's no audit clause. So if there is an, an issue with this, how do we, how do we verify, I guess, if the, if we can't audit this at all?
Well, I, and I'll defer to, to, to Joe on this, but, I mean, I've not seen our bills, electrical bills, but presumably they will show what we use, and so, you know, that will be the, that will be the audit, you know, and the meter would say, you, counter you've used this amount of energy, electricity, or you haven't. And if they said, we're going to extend because you haven't used it, we, we defer to what the meter says, and that would be the issue.
So the check and balance would be a bill, is, is that, that's what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Okay, Commissioner Anderson?
I just wanted to ask, wouldn't there be something, some surge protection built into the cup itself? I mean, what's feeding into the, to the building and, and the equipment and everything? Wouldn't there be some type of surge protection of, I would think, when you're spending millions of dollars?
I would assume that would be part of the cup, but I'll leave it to the experts. That kind of money?
Yeah.
To...
There's got to be something, isn't there, Steve?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, all right. So that, I just wanted to reassure anyone that that was a concern.
So, built into the cup is protections and surge protection, so if, if something should happen, we do have that as a backup, as well as the backup lines. Okay. All right, we, thank you. We have a motion and support. This is item number five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions?
I'll abstain.
Okay. All right, item passes. Next item, please.
Item number six is requesting commission approval of a five-year comparable source scheduled designation D8 interruptible supply agreement between the Charter County of Wayne and DTE Electric Company to deliver power to the central utility plant at the Wayne County Criminal Justice Center.
Commissioner Anderson?
The term interruptible to me is similar to what we have with our air conditioning. Is there, is that a similar type thing, that it can be interruptible by the company? Because I can see that be problematic with a jail and a court.
Answer is yes, similar. Beyond that, it's been explained to me three or four times, and I can't say anything more than it's similar. James wants to give more detail, or Steve, or Joe, probably.
Maybe Joe from DTE, right? He's with DTE.
He's our consultant.
He's our county consultant.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yes, it's very similar to the residential interruptible air conditioning mode. That's why the, another reason for the generators to be at the site.
Okay, that, that would be the backup?
It's a significant discount.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions on item number six?
Four.
It's been moved and supported. Moved by Commissioner Varga, supported by Commissioner Baydum. Further discussion? Commissioner Recky?
Yeah, in our highlights again, they say there's, the estimated cost of electric power service is not set forth in the agreement. I was wondering if Mr. Abell had any comment on that?
We've subsequently gotten that number, it's a million 658.
It's, pardon me?
We've subsequently gotten that number, it's a million 658, and for five years, eight million 290, and it's incorporated in Schedule A.
Okay.
So it's included.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, additional questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
She was looking over her shoulder.
Yeah.
Any abstentions?
I'm abstaining.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Anderson, were you a yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. All right. Well, Jewel's going to get you. Okay. On next item.
Next item, item number D7, is requesting commission approval of a three-year comparable source in-use gas transportation agreement between the Charter County of Wayne and DTE Gas Company.
Okay.
Support.
Moved and supported. This is the gas portion of this utility, correct?
Yes.
Right, and there's no upfront costs? It's just, it's just the contract to make us responsible for the gas we purchase?
Okay. Any questions on item seven? It's been moved, I'm sorry, Felicia?
To point out, and I was trying to have this through the chair, so this agreement is for gas services. It also includes installation of gas lines. The agreement indicates that it starts December 2020. However, we've been advised that the installation portion will start in August of 2019, and I was trying to get clarification right before we started from break, or how we're going to install in August of 19, if my term starts in December of 2020. And we didn't quite get that resolved, so that's the issue.
Okay. Is it Joe?
Yes.
Do you want to tackle that?
Yes. The main gas consumption of the facility will... The main gas consumption of the facility will not begin until December 2020. So, the contract that's before you is for receiving gas and the quantity that you will need when the building is occupied. But as part of the construction timeline, DTE is going to install the gas line as soon as the foundations and the exterior walls are in place.
So, how much is the installation of the gas lines?
They estimated it at $122,000, but it will be covered by the fact that you agree to buy gas from them for the three-year term listed in that agreement.
So, the 191 is the combination of the lines and the actual purchase of the gas? The 191,437?
No, that's just the gas. That was the three-year.
Okay, so I guess the...
Yes.
The 191 includes the buildout of the gas lines, as well as the purchase of the gas?
As long as we hit our number, it's included. That's our total outlay.
And, it's included.
Right, but the gas lines are being installed this year. The gas consumption is not going to start till next. This is as clarification. The gas consumption will start next year, but the gas lines will be built this year? As an FYI, okay. So, do we need to amend the date to, say, August 2019? Yeah?
It would seem appropriate to have another line, not necessarily to amend the current date. The current date is for gas. It could be clarified that gas consumption will begin December 1, 2020. So, it's clear to DTE, that's when we'll start our consumption.
Right.
But there should be another statement that indicates that the install will begin in 2019. That way, the dates of the contract cover everything.
Okay.
I will tell you that the ability for us to alter these boilerplate agreements is an extreme challenge with DTE.
E-DTE, I'm guessing.
Gas and electric. And so, there's no confusion from the gas company about, you know, when we're going to start receiving the gas and when we're going to start paying. So, I just want to make that, want to make that clear.
And that's why I wanted to just note that the lines will be put in this year. The consumption will begin next year. So, just as a matter, we'll leave it as it is, but just as a matter of information for commissioners.
That's fine.
Maybe in the resolution, yeah. Okay, Commissioner Carter McCormick?
I move approval.
Uh, we already have it moved and approved? We're waiting for further discussion. Commissioner Anderson?
Just to someone that might be able to answer this, because I don't remember where we're seeing it. Are we going to heat with electricity or gas? I would assume gas, right? The whole facility I'm talking about.
Oh, it's a boiler system?
Oh, it's going to be boiler system?
Is it like a boiler system?
It's like steam.
Combination, gas, boil, water.
The facilities will be heated with hot water produced by boilers in the cup, utilizing gas, gas-fired power.
Okay, good. I'd never had heard that discussed. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on this item? And just for clarification, in the resolution that we adopted, if this passes today, it passes tomorrow, we'll put the language in there for clarity that the lines will be installed in August of 2019, and the consumption of the power will be for our edification. Will be the gas we consume start December 2020. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstained.
All right, ayes have it. Okay. Next item, and this is going to be a bit much to go over the actual budget for this. We had a high level with Mark Abell and Kevin Haney earlier, but this is the actual item that was referred from Committee on Ways and Means to certify revenue and to decertify other revenues. So, I'm taking the clerk's job. Madam Clerk, number eight?
Item number eight, forwarded from the Committee on Ways and Means, requesting commission approval of a proposed amendment to the 2018-19 Appropriations Ordinance in accordance with Budget Adjustment Number 2019-35118, certifying revenue sources and appropriation uses in the amount of $25,113,441 in the General Fund, certifying and decertifying revenue sources netting to zero in the HHS Nutrition Fund, certifying and decertifying revenue sources netting zero in the Community and Economic Development Fund, and decertifying revenue sources and appropriation uses in the amount of $4,873,821 in the 2018 A Jail Debt Service Fund.
Okay, Kevin Haney, what you been waiting for?
Patiently waiting.
Patiently waiting for?
Yes, sir.
So, the budget adjustment primarily focuses on the General Fund. The funds, the other funds, if you will, the Nutrition Fund, which is the Meals on Wheels, as well as the Community and Economic Development Fund, those are basically just being zeroed out. The Meals on Wheels funds, the Nutrition Fund, we had originally budgeted, as well as the Community and Economic Development Fund, we originally budgeted dollars to be used against the deficit elimination plan that was proposed and approved by the state. However, as part of this body's goodwill, we did a budget adjustment last year in '18, after this budget was done, or the same time that the '19 budget was done, that we actually got rid of those deficits early. We paid off those deficits early. So, we didn't need those dollars. So, we're going to be taking those dollars and moving them to the cup, if you will. And then, other things we're doing in this budget adjustment is we're certifying approximately $16 million of additional property tax revenues. In 2018, I have to get my years right, because I'm in multiple years. 2018, we had a, we collected $294 million of property taxes. After the budget, while we did the budget for 2019, we only had $286 million. And because of what we're expecting to receive, we're going to certify $16 million, of which $13 million is specifically for, going to be transferred to the cup. We're also going to be transfer, we're using fund balance, restricted fund balance for airport parking taxes that I think I mentioned earlier. And that's about $11.8 million. Those dollars are going to be transferred to the Construction Fund and going to be used for the infirmary. And the dollars that were previously earmarked for the infirmary are going to be reallocated, if you will, to the cup. The last major piece in this budget adjustment is that we're using monies that we previously planned on using for debt service for the 2018 bonds, but because of the timing factor, we didn't need to use all of that. So, we originally budgeted $14 million for debt service for the 2018 A Bonds. Because of the timing of when the bonds actually were received, and when we had to make our first payments, we only needed 9.6. So, the difference, the $5 million difference, is being re-appropriated and sent over to the cup. So, that's basically, in a nutshell, there are some other minor housekeeping things that this budget is doing. But those are the major pieces of the budget adjustment that is being, that's taking place. If you have any questions, I am more than willing to answer.
Okay, can you say all that again? So, no, but seriously, it's, I'm looking at what you have here. But do you have a cleaner, something that you can give us that shows exactly what fund and exactly how much? And then, so that it totals, are, what, $30 million?
It's, I wish it was that easy. It's close. But at the end of the day, I'm using $30 million, transferring $30 million from the General Fund to the cup, and I'm transferring $5 million from the Capital Fund to the cup to get my $35 million for the current year.
Okay.
In year two, which is going to be 2020, in the budget that's being proposed this year, we're planning on using just over $4 million. And that's included in the CEO recommended budget that's being reviewed by the commission now. And we expect to use an additional $750,000 of excess tourist tax in 2021 to total my $40 million that I needed. So, it's, this is actually over three years. What I'm asking you to approve this year, for this year, is the $35 million that's being moved over to the cup.
Okay. I'm sure there's some questions on these funding sources. Questions from the commission? Commissioner Ware?
Could we have Mark to just go over this again before the questions? Thank you.
Yes.
And this is attachment one from the fiscal office.
I'm going to use, I'm going to go back to attachment A. Okay, because if you look at page three of the proposed budget adjustment, where it says total fund sources and uses, it says 35. The $60 million below there is kind of a duplicate, because you're dealing with multi-funds. So, numbers tend to get duplicated. But the actual revenue impact, or I should say, the fund balance impact is 35,213, which is the number right above it. 35,213,562 on the last page. And that number matches the year one on the total sources and uses, which shows exactly where the money is all coming from. And again, what Kevin is doing from a budgetary perspective is kind of pigeonholing, taking money from here and here and here and here, and putting it all together. Now, ultimately, when you're dealing with $35 million worth of resources, we're either taking it by repurposing money, or taking it by taking, with revenues that have actually been newly created, which is the increase in property tax revenue, or we're taking it out of fund balance. If we didn't do this, theoretically, all of this money would ultimately end up in fund balance. But we're using it for this specific purpose, for this specific year. Now, the $15 million in General Fund money, that will be, as we had discussed when we were going over our property tax assessments, money that should be coming year to year to year. It's just that this year, we're going to be using it for the cup. In future years, we'll be using it for other purposes.
Okay. Commissioner Baker McCormick?
To Mark's analysis, the 850,000 for the fixtures, furniture, and equipment, because I see you did this like a balance sheet to show us uses and the sources. Where is, is that included in this? Because that should be, right? And what you have for Rock? The 850,000?
So, if I may, Commissioner, what you're seeing here on Mark's schedule in year one is actually the revenue side. So, you'll see at the very top of Mark's schedule, you'll see four lines, 2.979, 11,881, 15,352, and 5 million. That totals up $35 million. And those, what Mark tried to do is show you the various sources of revenue, the summarized sources of revenue, if you will. So, I'm using excess tourist tax. We're using airport parking tax. We're using General Fund monies. And we're also using the Construction Fund, I'm sorry, the Capital Fund, fund balance.
And so, these are the areas where we're pulling money to...
Correct.
Right, and that's what you just asked for, right, Alicia?
Right.
Okay, and so, what I'm asking, though, under Rock, it has utility plant, shell, 7 million, and then facilities, and then for additional video.
The, Commissioner?
Why isn't the 354 fixtures and...
If you look at the total of those, let's go over the uses. The DTE Energy Services, the central utility plant, that 30,719, we approved that as one of the agenda items. The backup power of 876, we approved that also as one of the agenda items. The next three from Rock, the 7,200,000, the 1.1 million, and the 105,000, the total of those three, and I didn't indicate it here, I probably should have, is 8,476,617. And that also, you'll recognize that number as the total cost that we'll be paying to Rock under this arrangement.
Okay. But again, the question is the cost for the fixtures?
The furniture fixtures is $850,000, and that will be paid by Rock.
But where would that have?
I didn't include that in there since they were...
That wouldn't be part of our county budget. That's their...
They're paying, and they are also paying $2.5 million of the shell. And I did not include that. Those are their costs, 850,000 plus 2.5 million. If I was to incorporate it here, I would show the total of those two as an additional sources, as well as an additional use, and it would come to zero.
Okay. I was just wondering why those numbers weren't included in this, which this is kind of a cheat sheet with every, all of the costs.
Yeah, good way to put it. Again, the purpose of that was to kind of get our arms around everything that's going on with all the different components and all the different entities that we're dealing with, and to understand the capital expenditure side of it, as well as the ongoing operational and maintenance side of it.
Thank you.
Additional questions on the sources and where they're coming from to pay for the cup? I'm sorry, Commissioner Kline had a question before you move approval, Commissioner.
It might even be more than one, Madam Chair. What's the cost of building the infirmary?
The cost of the building of the infirmary is estimated to be $34 million.
Okay.
Last information I received.
Sorry?
The last information I received.
Okay. How much do we annually collect in the airport parking tax?
In the current year, we're expecting $21.5 million.
And we have an agreement with the state of Michigan to allow us to use that money?
The state statute allows us to use those dollars for indigent health care. And it does not specify medical care or mental care. And we've had an opinion from Corporation Council that it can also be used for CapEx. So...
For?
Capital improvement, or capital...
Yeah, yeah, okay. You're suggesting 15 million of funding over the next couple of years. How much other airport parking tax money has gone to the jail project?
$12.4 million.
What other expenditures out of... Well, let me say this. We have charter responsibilities for indigent health. Correct?
I believe so.
Yeah, we do. And the charter came into existence the same year that the county closed its hospital. And so, I think that it was no accident that it was put into the charter, since the hospital was going away for the county, that we have responsibilities for indigent health. What other uses have we had? Well, I'll also point out that, and the county executive, in his State of the County address, has used the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation study of the health in all 83 counties of Michigan. And this pointed out that Wayne County is absolutely 83rd out of 83 for health. So, what other uses of the airport parking tax, besides the jail, have we used in the last few years for indigent health?
So, the airport parking tax pays for public health, for those public health functions that are not, like food inspections or pool inspections and things like that. It also funds, partially funds, the mental health authority. And it also funds the jails, 70% of the General Fund, general purpose cost of the jail medical and jail mental.
And what does that run to?
Oh, geez. You got me there, Commissioner. I think it's around $8 million. I think. I know public health is $2 million and change.
Yeah.
And then, the jail mental, jail medical, I want to say it's... And then the jail mental, jail medical, I want to say it's 6 to 8 million, somewhere around there. I can't give you the exact number.
It's in that neighborhood. And so kind of what I'm pointing out here, first of all, it's shocking to me that we just have 12 million laying around in dollars that are earmarked for indigent health in the county that has the worst health issues. And I can go over the numbers for the number of uninsured in this county. And that basically all of this money is going to subsidize operations in the jails when we have 1.8 million residents with tremendous amount of needs over there. And that we don't have ways of spending that money to meet our charter obligation. I will publicly say here that I'll find that the legal opinion is rather thin here. I mean, you could kind of make it work under the law. But that we're using this amount of money. And even if you add in the cost of the annual contract with CCS and WellPath, we're spending this money on a relatively small population of folks in Wayne County that are indigent. Not everybody in the jail is indigent, but there's a lot of that. But I think that mirrors the rest of the county. And none of this money, basically none of this money, is going to support the county residents at large. You're taking 12 million this year. What does that leave us with a fund balance then in the? And I know people like to talk about the airport parking tax, but I'll call it the indigent health fund. How much of a balance do we have in the indigent health fund then after this 11.8 million?
There will be approximately $500,000.
Okay. How about last year? Did we have a fund balance at the end of last year?
Yes, we're using 9.5 million of that fund balance as part of this budget adjustment.
Yeah, and I think, Madam Chair, we should go back. I think we've been running big fund balances in there for quite some time of unspent money for indigent health. And again, I'll say as a charter responsibility, I think we need to look more carefully at how we spend that money. And I would also say this 11 million, we've talked about the 140 million rainy day fund, but I take it that none of this general fund money that's referred to in here, the 15 million comes out of the rainy day fund?
That's correct. These are restricted dollars that can only be used on indigent health.
Yeah, no, but I mean the general fund, where we're taking money out of general fund.
But there's-
That's not out of the-
No, there's different pools of fund balance.
So I would opine, Madam Chair, that if there's ever a rainy day, this is it. When we get socked with a $40 million deal, you know, we weren't sure what's gonna, what's gonna cost us something, but then with the closing of the trashed energy incinerator and we had to go to this way. To me, that's the appropriate use for a rainy day fund. And instead of 12 million out of indigent health, that we really should be spending in other ways, in my opinion, for our citizens, that that money stay, would stay in there and actually go towards indigent health, and that we pull 12 million out of our rainy day fund and go about things that way. So with that, Madam Chair, thank you, I'll leave it at that.
Could I make a comment in response?
Mr. Hoffman?
Administration doesn't disagree with almost anything you said. The sad reality is, we are having a hard time utilizing funds available to their max to help with indigent care in this county. We run FQHCs, which are mostly federally funded health centers, which are, I don't know, last time I saw, 50 to 60% utilized. We have been working, having meetings with our new Director of Wellness, who I think does a very good job. Those are wonderful places to try to get the capacity up to serve the need that's obviously out there. Now, why aren't we doing a good enough job in utilizing the funds we have available? Okay, maybe it's our fault, we're doing the best we can and we're looking at it. But we really are looking for effective ways to utilize funds available like these funds, like the Federal Health Center, so that what is out there and what is available is being used 100% because we know the needs there.
Me, May?
I've been familiar. There are challenges. I've been chairing HHS for a long time in this county. There are other avenues that I brought forward for use of indigent health. I don't think it's, when you say 60% utilized are FQHCs, we have two of them. I think we can be more aggressive in that, you see, because Wayne County, and I don't know if people know federally qualified health centers, Detroit and Wayne County are way underserved. Chicago, Cleveland, all of these towns have many, many more FQHCs than we have. And the need is out there, and I don't think we've been aggressive enough. And I don't think you measure the success of an HQ, an FQHC by whether it's at 98% capacity or 70% or even 60% for the services that it provides. And so what I'm encouraging here is much more deeper discussions, and really shaking the tree on what else can be done out there and what other kind of partners we have. Certainly, the Mental Health Authority would come into this because we know we're not reaching all of the folks out there that we need to reach. And there's any number of ways, but I just don't think we have had that conversation. And I keep eyeballing this 21 to 23 million and saying that can be a very effective tool for dealing with an obvious issue that this county has with its citizens. So I would be happy, as HHS Chair, to really sit down and go through some of this stuff and really have a conversation. And, you know, 23 million's a lot of money, and it's not gonna be 23 million out the door that we're gonna be able to figure out in the next few months on how to spend that. But certainly a number, because I look at the number and I say, well, maybe we're actually spending a couple of million out of the 20-whatever million, and so there's a great upside to the kinds of things that we can do. I'm sure the National Association of Counties has some ideas about public health and public health programs, as well as the Michigan Association of Counties, and what's being done out there. So that's what I'm trying to encourage by this discussion, that we really sit down and really talk about this. We've got a nice pool of money and we've got a very, very needy county. We are underserved, people talk about food deserts out there. We have doctor deserts. There is just not enough primary care physicians, particularly in the city of Detroit, but in the county in general. How can we impact that? What kinds of things can we do? And those are the discussions I'd like to get into.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think that is so important because unfortunately, we are 83 out of 83 counties as it pertains to our health. And it's time that we start to put our money where our mouth is that it pertains to the health of our residents in Wayne County. So thank you for that, and I think that's gonna be a conversation discussion that we need to have in a very earnest way and genuine way to make some efforts towards that. Thank you for that. Commissioner Diane Webb, and then Glenn Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Alicia Bell.
I know your whole names.
So I want to thank Commissioner Colleen for really that deep dive into the issue that I was trying to get at, to begin with, when I started down that road. But another thing I want to point out, only because of my, all of my time, you know, on audit over the 11 years that I've been here is, and you, when you hear that, you know, when you hear these reports, and I always look at things on a big picture. I never look at things in boxes, because when you do that, then you end up causing harm down the road that you don't, you don't, you're not anticipating. So I try to anticipate all those things. When you talk about fund balances, for example, we talked about Veterans Affairs at the Budget Talks. Well, we got a 1.8 million fund balance in veterans. Well, the reason that we have fund balances is because we are not getting the money to where it needs to be. So these fund balances aren't like because of efficiencies. These fund balances are because we're 700-plus people short in the county and that we're not getting services, whether it's to indigent health or to veterans or to all these people. Even roads, we gave money back to the state on roads because we don't have the people to fill the potholes. We don't have the people to meet the veterans, we don't have the people to serve the indigent health. So this is no badge of honor that we have these fund balances. This is not an indication of fiscal responsibility. This is an indication of poor operations and service delivery. And I mean that, there's no discount to the people who are trying very hard that we have to provide these services, but we just don't have the people to provide the services. And therefore, we end up with a fund balance. It's no different than not taking care of assets and then requiring a need to sell them because we've neglected to take care of them. It's the same mentality over and over again. So, yeah, I really, we're here to represent the constituencies that elected us. And I believe that we need to work harder on taking these funds that are designated to be spent in these particular areas, whether it's on indigent health, which we know is a tremendous need in this county. Veteran services, we have vets under VIDOCs in this county. And we're just not getting the money out because we just don't have the people. So it really comes down to, you know, increasing the compensation and, you know, having comparable compensation offers to retain, employ, recruit and retain people to deliver these services so that money is intended for certain purposes or getting there, and we don't have all these extra. It's not like it's extra money, it's money we're failing to use in service delivery to the people. And then we say, oh, look, we got this extra money over here in fund balance that we can just slide over here. Well, it's not what the money was intended for. So just so long as y'all know, the big picture is, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson.
I won't carry on too much further on this, but I wanted to chime in too and just say that I agree that one of my biggest problems with this proposal of transferring the money from indigent care is, whether, while it may be legal, is it moral to do it when there's such need out there? I know just recently, one of our committee meetings, I think it was HHS, Commissioner Varga, asked about why couldn't there be one of these centers in down the downriver area? And there's also, there's only one in Highland Park and one in the city of Wayne. They do a, oh, Hemtramic, I'm sorry. And they do a tremendous service. But they're so limited and the people that need that care can't get there in most cases. If they live in Detroit or they live downriver, there's a lot of people that can't get to those facilities. So I would just ask, you know, and I believe Judge Kaufman, he's indicated he realizes there's a need, just trying to figure out how to get that need addressed. But maybe looking at some additional centers, some of those additional centers, to be able to fund those additional centers and to get them to out to the need. And I do question using that money for this purpose.
If I could address-
Mr. Abell?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. If I could address some of the concerns of Commissioner Colleen and Commissioner Webb, I would be a big proponent of always trying to convert restricted money to unrestricted money. The reason for that is because when the money stays in the indigent fund, you have to meet a lot of compliance issues in order to use it. If we can find a use for that, that's compliant, and apparently it is according to Corporation Council, now we're affected, rather than using general fund money, now we are effectively freeing up general fund money for what could be done to increase the needs of the indigent without necessarily having to check all the boxes. If we have to check all the boxes, we may not be able to use it for a purpose that's consistent with what we're talking about. If we only have to check half the boxes, now, now we have more leeway and more flexibility. But we do have a tool for dealing with that. And the difference is, when you look at fund balance, you look at different components of fund balance. Some of it is unassigned, as Judge Kaufman always talks about, the 140 million of unassigned fund balance. We really have about $180 million worth of fund balance because some of it is restricted, some of it is non-spendable, and some of it is assigned. We could always take a portion of our unassigned fund balance, which we are effectively creating by not using it for this purpose and rather using indigent money and saying that we're going to assign it for another purpose so that we don't, so that we create that discipline to use it for the purpose that we're discussing. Again, it just creates flexibility, is my point.
It's also, I'll continue, it also means there's that opportunity for it to be used for things that may not benefit those that it was intended in the first place.
But consistent, but consistent with that.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. But as I outlined very early on, the split with the cost was another factor. But I hope you have no vote on this last item.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Amoreki. Who supported it?
I did.
Okay, supported by Commissioner Armored Clark Coleman. Discussion, Commissioner Colleen.
Yeah, I want to respond to Mr. Abell. From a purely bookkeeping point of view, that is correct, Mr. Abell. What's missing in your analysis of that is an assumption that there is no way to spend these other dollars. And I will contend that there certainly is. So yes, if we're stymied and we have nowhere else to go, your financial analysis is one. But now you're entering into the policy area, so I will respectfully disagree that there are zero other options for this 20-some million. From one point of view, you're absolutely correct, but I don't think that takes in everything.
No, I don't disagree with you, Mr. Commissioner. All I'm saying is that if we stay disciplined and use it for the intended purpose, it creates an additional amount of flexibility, that was my entire point.
Thank you. Commissioner Baker McCormick?
Is there anywhere else that we can get this monies from? Just a question.
Well, theoretically, however, this is, this is the recommendation of the CEO to be using his money for this purpose.
Right. But do you, are you aware of anywhere else, any other funds that are not restricted that we could possibly? Or a portion?
Other than unrestricted fund balance, which is not the, you know, it's not recommended by the CEO to do it that way. There's really not a whole lot of other-
I'm sorry, what's not recommended to do?
The CEO, this budget adjustment is a recommendation by the CEO, certification of revenues. And he's not recommending, we're not recommending that be done using unrestricted fund balance when this money is available for its use, and it is an intended use.
It's a rainy day fund.
Right, and so what I'm asking is, just again, is there is, is or is not another area we can pull? I'm not asking the recommendation. I understand that this is the recommendation, but I was just trying to clarify.
You can do anything you want, but you could close down the Wellness Department and use that money for it if you wanted to. But within the realm of reason, we think this combines the least pain to the ongoing operations of the county in terms of funding what we think is a necessary item to finish the Criminal Justice Center.
Commissioner Baker McCormick, we could certainly take it out of the general, the surplus. I mean, that's, that's a pot of money that's available. Then you have the counterargument that Mr. Abell made about restricted funds versus non-restricted funds. So yes, we could have taken it all out of there, but based on Mr. Abell's argument, he gave his perspective as to why not, I think Mr. Haney gave his perspective as to not. But certainly, there are other places that it could have come out of, but this is the recommendation that they're giving us. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, opposed are Anderson, Colleen, Webb. Any abstentions? One, two, three, okay, I think the ayes have it, yes. Okay, thank you so much. Next item.
Next item, item number E, such other matters as may properly be submitted.
Yes, I have a such other matter. I want to, again, thank the staff for their very hard work in a very limited time. Although we started this about a month ago, getting all the correct documents and the back and forth of that, and getting the questions answered, I appreciate their time and effort spent to make this happen for today. I thank the commissioners- I thank the commissioners for your time. This is probably not the last long meeting we'll have on this subject. I'm sure there'll be other items to come before, as it relates to the Criminal Justice Center before 2022. So I thank you for your indulgence in going through, asking the questions, getting the answers, and getting this through. It's not all pretty, but it is what it is at this point, so we just want to make sure that we don't fail and don't have another failed jail, that none of us will be able to live with that. So I just want to thank the commissioners for your hard work and dedication to this process. Thank you to the administration, Mr. Kaufman, Mr. Haney, Mr. Heath, for coming and spending all of your day with us, we appreciate having your smiling faces here. And we want to say, staff, again, thank you for your hard work. To the chairs of the committees, please bear with the fiscal staff, because we're in the middle of budget, as you're going through your committee assignments and your committee contracts, they may or may not be able to have as detailed reports as they would normally have for your committees, because we're also in the midst of the budget. So just please bear with Mark, Mary and Terrence as they give the fiscal analysis that may not be-